Bring it all in. All right, let's call this meeting to order. So, we've got no Anton. I didn't hear from him if he was going to be coming or not.
He's around, so I saw him this afternoon.
Okay. So, we'll see if he shows up. So, now is the, now it's time for the, for the open forum. So, if you've anything to, to address the, the council for, we ask you to come up and identify yourself at the, at the microphone, and then you can have up to five minutes. So, does anyone have anything? Okay, hearing nothing. Then we'll close the open forum and move on to the consent agenda. Consent agenda has the typical three items on it. The approval of, approval of the current agenda, approval of the previous meetings, minutes, and the improvement of the bills included in the packet, as well as a fourth item, the Curling Club Consumption and Display Permit Renewal.
No, this is a potential fifth item, actually.
Whoa.
That I would ask you to put on the consent agenda, too.
Oh, this is grammar raised.
This is just a transfer. They have, they've got some ownership changes, and that we, they need to change the licensee name, and so we're just transferring the license. Management's is still Terry, but they've got a new partner and, and a new name, so...
There you go.
Nothing else is changing about the operation. If you would add this to the consent agenda, appreciate it.
All right, so...
If you'd prefer to talk about it, we can put it on the agenda later.
A little summary of the Curling Club Consumption and Display Permit Renewal. This is a permit for the, for the Curling Club to have on sale 3-2 beer.
No, this is their setup.
This is their setup.
Yep. People can bring their...
Oh, gotcha.
Have drinks there.
But they do sell 3-2.
They also have a, a separate license to do on sale.
Both of the things for the Curling Club, though, are, are, they're different than, than a lot of the other things that we have. So, it's, um, so I always get them confused. So, this is for their setups. Okay. And then the fifth one would be the change in the license. And this would, um, this wouldn't, correct me if I'm wrong, this wouldn't affect their licenses, just changing the, the, um, you know, the owners and...
This is basically granting a new license to the new owners, but the new owners are basically the, a restructuring of the old owners, so...
There you go.
I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
There's a motion. Do we have a second?
I will second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? It's kind of like we pulled some items for discussion, but we didn't. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. All right, so we're going to move on to the Planning Commission report. So, we have a bunch of resolutions on the docket here, and I believe that I'm probably just going to turn that over to Tim to, um, to move through these, so that we can consider and discuss what they, what they are.
Okay, the first item that came before the Planning Commission was a request by 47N 90W LLC for a conditional use permit to operate a three-unit lodging facility in the former Cavillan Funeral Home on Second Street. And you have all the information in the, in your packet, shows the, the layout of the lodging units. There's also a planned commercial use, which is a permitted use within that zone district, which doesn't need any action by the Planning Commission or council. But the lodging does require a conditional use permit. The Planning Commission held a public hearing. There were three Planning Commission members present, all supported and voted in favor of the request. You can see the findings of the Planning Commission in your packet. And there's also a resolution. Approving this conditional use permit. Now, if there's any questions you have?
So, when you guys did the public meeting on this, well, did any of the surrounding property owners show up, or was that...
No.
Okay.
The resolution doesn't have the condition that the Planning Commission requested in it right now, so that was a, just an oversight. They did request that you, if you grant the permit, that you include the requirement to preserve four off-street parking spaces on the property.
Do we need to add that, or is that something...
Should be added. That should be included in the resolution, so...
And I'll make, make the motion to approve the Resolution 2018-06 with the contingency that the parking requirement is placed, to require that four on-site parking spaces are provided.
There's a motion. Is there a second? Anybody? Okay, I'll second that. Any further discussion for this? Any discussion on it at all? Questions?
Well, just, just to clarify, the zone district that the, this is in is the mixed-use zone district, which allow, which is really the transition district from the downtown district to the residential district. And that district does allow lodging facilities to be, be in that district, but does require a conditional use permit. You know, the Planning Commission, two years ago, addressed the issue of vacation rental properties, and I think that was a concern that was kind of made kind of community-wide about the potential proliferation...
Croweferation.
Yes, I think I tripped over that last time. So, I shouldn't use that word. And the Planning Commission, at that, at that time, recommended that the R1 and R2 districts not allow any type of lodging activity, which was consistent with, with what the ordinance already provided, but they wanted to make it clear of record that they, they supported strengthening the residential districts and making sure that they weren't being eroded away by potential lodging uses, which, um, when, when the city adopted its most recent modifications to its zoning ordinance, created this mixed-use district with the understanding that, that area kind of above Highway 61 and kind of up in the first block, and it's not every block, but, you know, through the center part of the city, was kind of a transition area, and because of that, there's already, were already existing commercial uses and recognition that we wanted to make sure that that was understood, that that was going to be kind of a transition zone, but once you got to the residential district, that that was going to be purely residential and allowing other types of uses was not going to be allowed, so...
I have a quick question. Is there a reason that the coffee shop or the commercial part of that is not in the resolution? Is that already taken care of with the zoning?
Commercial uses are, are permitted use in that mixed-use district. It's only lodging uses are that and, I can't remember what else is, requires a conditional use in that district, but...
Yeah, I don't think the list is in the...
Okay.
But it's part of the nature of the mixed-use zone to provide, to provide a transition area from the downtown commercial zone to the residential zone, so there's, you know, mixed uses in there, some residential, the access for some, some lodging, and then, and then also other commercial, commercial activities. So, in that area, there's also the yarn shop. There's, um, there's a bunch of small businesses that are, that are done out of those, those buildings that are in that zone, so, so that's, um, part of the purpose of the mixed-use zone as it, as it is presented, so... Any other questions? Any other comments? All right, oh, go ahead.
No, I just, I know that it's going to take me a little longer. I need to work with Mike more and look at more maps, and, you know, having a, less than a week to really look at this, being a new commissioner is a bit daunting, and I have different thoughts, but those thoughts can't be, I won't share them until I am totally informed in, in what we have going on and what the map is, so...
Yeah. It took me a while to get, you know, to get down with what the differences in the different zones were as well, so that's...
Yeah.
It's something that, yeah, it's definitely worth putting the time in.
Yep.
I, I guess I would also just encourage you to share your thoughts anyway. Like, we all kind of know what situation you're in, and what's, expectations are fair.
Sure.
But what you think about things is still important, so...
Right, and I, you know, my first thought when I got this and read it, I thought, oh, another home, which has not been used as a home, but it's, it's another potential that could be a home, and I look at the complexities of our community. We struggle for workers. We struggle for decent-paying jobs. I know what the house was originally listed at or has been listed at, knowing that in real estate life, it might be worth that. In a working, working person's life, I don't know how else to, to describe and differentiate those without putting absolute titles on things, but could it have gone to a family that's looking for something that could have bought it for a cheaper price, turned around and fixed it? Again, it's, it's in the zone, but I know that there's a lot of homes that are changing. I know that we don't have much here for median income. When your median home in this community is above $200,000, that's a lot of money if you're working at a hotel and maybe at a grocery store, or a convenience store, or where it may be. So, not everybody's employed by the school, the hospital, the county. Even those things are changing with healthcare, as we all know, as to what people find affordable. So, in looking at some of these things, I would hope that maybe, being Jonathan and I are new, that we could kind of look at some of these things again. I think he and I probably need to become educated as to what's been happening in the past and why, but I would hope that we could kind of look at some of those things, because I think the council in a whole needs to look at how do we try to resolve some of these issues or help some of these issues. And bringing younger families into our community, obviously, is something that I think is really important to keep us going. When you look on Boreal, when you look at the paper, when you talk to people about who are completely short of employees, for whatever reason, those are multiple, what do we see and envision trying to bring those people in? And affordable housing, I believe, is one...
It's a huge part of it.
One part of it. Having a good education system is another part of it, when you're talking young families, and then being able to find jobs that can, can support their housing needs. So, I just, without being too long-winded, that's kind of some of the things that I hope that we can look at, you know, especially if both Jonathan and I decide to continue and be on the ballot, and if, if the public would choose that they appreciate our efforts then.
Yeah, and, and that investment, you know, that investment into understanding the zoning and understanding how that works, like, that would, that definitely will pay off. I think, there, I think there's kind of two things, two things happening right now. In, in regards to this specific property, I felt the same way that you did when I heard that it had been purchased, and I, I felt like, damn it, you know, like, like, gosh, because I had always been in my brain kind of figuring out how that house could be, could be used, but the truth of the fat matter is that it hadn't been.
Right.
And it had been on the market for a really long time. And, and for me, that was, you know, after I thought about that, got over that initial, like, shit, you know, the kind of emotion, then, yeah, this is a public meeting, right? Then, um, then, uh, but, that's what I was feeling, right? After I got over that, then, then I realized, like, whoa, this is actually going to be used now, and it's actually going to be producing, like, it's going to be increasing its value, it's going to be being used, and all those sorts of things, and I think those are positive, and that is the purpose of that mixed-use zone.
And I agree, and I'm not using this as an example. Obviously, jumping on to the, the council at this point in time, I'm not here to come and disrupt everything that we're doing and say, no, for my feeling, you can't. It's just things that I'd like to revisit. You know, I think not only are VRVOs becoming very popular in income-making for people, we have a lot of homes that are bought by people that may not even be seasonal. I can count in my neighborhood, within two square blocks, we're literally the only, one of three houses with the lights on year-round, within my block, both behind me and in front of me, three of four. So, there's a lot happening within our community, and eventually, I mean, it's great, the houses are bought, people are paying their taxes, all that stuff, don't get me wrong, but again, if we go back to the fact that we need to operate and have businesses for these people, and now suddenly we don't have people here, I know my time at the hospital, we had three workers within the last eight months that turned down high-paying jobs because they couldn't find a place to live.
And I think that might be indicative of the second part of it, you know, we've got this particular situation with this resolution before us, and then we've got, we've got this larger problem with the, with the, the Planning and Zoning Ordinance itself.
Right.
And how we use that, that ordinance to, to direct the, the development of...
Yep.
Of homes and the usage of homes within the city. And, and I think that conversation is one that I'm really excited about, because I do think that we can do a lot with that conversation itself. And, and that is going to be something that, when we get the comprehensive plan back, that's going to instruct us to do a lot of work on this. And so, this is, this is the council that's going to be doing a lot of that work.
Right.
So, so that's pretty exciting, and I look forward to having those conversations about that. I think that's really good. And, you know, we could come down to see what is the mixed-use zone actually supposed to be doing, and is it performing that as it is? I think, you know, what we're sitting in front of right now is, is this, this, this application, this resolution is for, you know, is, is for a conditional use that, that follows all the criteria as it is right now. And I think, you know, the way I look at that is that we have to weigh that according to those criteria for right now. So, I hear, I hear what you're saying.
Yeah.
And I'm, and I'm looking forward to those conversations.
Yes, again, it wasn't opposition or anything, it was just, here's my thoughts as we move forward. This is the first night all of these have come up, so...
Yeah.
Here's kind of what's in the back of my brain a little bit.
Yeah, I get that.
Well, you know, and I, and I appreciate, you know, you saying that, too, because I think as you take in more of what we do here, you're going to find that issues are not, are not so singular, that they...
Right.
They branch out and take in all kinds of other activities or topics, and the issue of housing and zoning go hand in hand, and, of course, the city has been involved with conversations about, you know, the need for, for more housing, has been working with the EDA on affordable housing options, and, of course, our next item on the Planning Commission agenda is...
Yeah, we get further in.
About housing, housing and zoning, so...
Right.
And even the, the, the conversation about the stormwater plan has a lot to do about other issues, so it's not, it's hard to separate things, and I think you'll find that, you know, one thing leads to the next.
Oh, yeah.
So, thanks, thank you.
The pinky is connected to the thumb, so to speak.
Yeah, and eventually to the brain.
Yeah.
One would hope. All right, so, so we've got Resolution 2018-6. We've got a motion and a second. Any, any closing comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, someone carries. Well, move on to the next one, and the next one is, is one that's a little bit, um, yep, the next one is, is one that there's a little bit of history to as well. So, Mike and Matt Groth came to, um, Groth, growth, growth, growth. I always get that wrong. And I even think about it, and I'm just like, it's got to be that one, but I always guess the wrong ones.
I don't get it wrong.
So, Mike and Matt Groth came to us to request a rezoning of a property at the base of the Gunflint from R2, and the R2 zone is typically multifamily, higher-density housing development. They wanted that rezoned to R1, even though they're looking to do multifamily-type housing on it.
It was commercial.
It was commercial.
Yeah.
I thought it was R2.
No, it was, it was our commercial zone. We were looking at R2 or R1, which is one of the strange things about our ordinance, they're very, very similar. Require the exact same things.
Except for the setback.
They have the same list of required uses, but the setbacks for R2 are much larger, and so it's harder to do the things that it says it allows.
Another thing we need to look at.
Make a lot of sense, yeah.
Put it on the list. We'll put it on the list. So, anyway, that, that property was, oh, it says it right there, it was rezoned from, from commercial industrial. Yeah, I got this. So, we rezoned it to R1 because the setbacks would allow them to fulfill the project that they're talking about. The project that they're talking about is up to 10 apartments in three, or, yeah, in three buildings, and, and now they're looking for the conditional use permit to be able to, to build and provide those units on that property. They can need a conditional use permit for that property because it's zoned R1, and R1 is single-family housing, and R2 would be the multifamily housing. So, it's an extra step that was created by rezoning it R1 instead of R2.
No, R2 would still ask them for...
For conditional use?
It's the same lists.
Good gravy, we got to work on this thing.
No, we don't. We got this handled.
Anyway.
More important stuff.
We have different feelings about that.
Yeah.
So, Tim, do you have anything else to say about that? A little bit of background or a little summary of the...
I mean, I think you spelled out the background pretty well. I mean, we're really...
Part of being wrong.
With my help. With my help.
Well, whatever, you know. You know what it is.
We guessed there.
The request before us is for a conditional use permit to build 10, 10 apartment units in the R1 Zone District, which is an allowable conditional use in that district, so, just to clarify that. The Planning Commission held the public hearing. There were a few members in the audience that expressed support for the Planning Commission to approve this conditional use permit, recognizing the need for, for housing in the community. The, the Planning Commission did recommend approval of the, the conditional use permit, and we did talk about parking, only in, in the respect that the ordinance requires 1.5 parking spaces per unit, and they're proposing 14 parking spaces, so somehow they're going to have to squeeze in an additional parking space to accommodate the, the ordinance requirements, but we did not place that as a condition, since it's a requirement of the ordinance, and they...
We'll park the Peter hole.
We'll let you guys work that out.
We're really trying to distance ourselves from moving, you know, although...
You are.
Not coughing coffee.
I can go back and tell you, I call it Cloverer's House, because when I grew up, that's who owned it, so...
I could, I could say that, but then nobody would know what, you know, only you and I would know who...
Well, that makes me feel...
Give them two years and it'll...
Eric, yeah.
Kim knows.
I was two blocks up the street.
Yeah, see there, yeah, okay.
I'm the only one.
Now, that requirement only kicks in when they actually have 10 units.
Right.
So, and they're not planning on building 10 tomorrow, they're going to do this in phases, so they've got plenty of time to figure out how to do that.
Correct.
Okay, with the snowmobile trail area, still going through that?
It's going to be set farther back off the highway, so...
That snowmobile trail is in the highway right-of-way, so they don't have any control over that. They know that it goes through there. It's going to continue to go through there, and at least until something would change, so...
Yeah, I think it creates a little bit of a, of an issue to talk about, not that there's a, some problem that has to be solved on this property, but that we're allowing higher-density development in a place where we're making it really difficult for pedestrian access to occur, and particularly because we're using that space for a snowmobile trail seasonally, and it's literally a school across the street that would be unsafe for kids to walk to, because there's no sidewalks from these apartments to that school. That, that's not a reason to say no. This is a great proposal, I'm not saying anything against it, I'm just saying we, as a city, have that issue that we need to really think about, in particular, if we're going to encourage more of this type of development, that we've got a setup that, that supports it.
We acknowledge that the, when we rezoned at R1, that this was an action that was in the interest of the city to do, and so the city has assumed, you know, some responsibility for that R1.
And that actually is a county road now, correct? So, it would take some work between the city and the county to have discussions.
We've been talking about pedestrian access on the Gunflint Trail, particularly in this block, and all those conversations have focused on the west side of the road, where the school is, and that would connect the existing trail on the highway and the existing sidewalk on County Road 7. So, it's just kind of an interesting, we're 100 feet from the school, and, you know, we're parking lot at the school anyway.
Sure.
There's no way to get there. It's very safe in the way of time.
So, I think that you're right, though, that, that issue will be an issue that's going to confront us, because, I mean, as, as a council, we've talked about making sure that there are adequate connections to places in the community that need to have access, and so the question may come up at some point. It's not the developers' issue, but it's really the city and the counties' issue to resolve snowmobile, pedestrian access, and I think that question is probably going to, you know, come about when there's probably enough activity there that warrants that, yeah.
Well, and there probably is a lot, without them being there, I think there's a lot of activity anyway. I think a lot of people use County 7, use that corridor as a walking area. You come down the block, you're back on the bike or the walking path. I see a lot of people, whether it's 5:30 in the morning or 8 o'clock at night in the summer, that are using that whole area, so...
And there is a plan to make that connection from Highway 61 to County Road 7, and I'm not sure exactly when that is supposed to happen, but with...
It's fluid.
Yeah, it seems like it's, it's, it's going to happen.
Moving, moving target.
But, but it's, but it, there's not a fixed date on that, so... But it will be on the west side of the Gunflint, not on the east side, so...
So...
So, I would make a motion to approve Resolution 2018-07.
I will second that.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I think it's an exciting project, it's going to, it's going to bring up some other questions for us to answer, but I think that it's moving in the right direction. Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Moving right along. This is the Anderson variance, as we're talking about. So, this variance is basically for an entryway to be built within the required setback.
Yeah, and this is a pretty simple request. You have a drawing in your packet showing the location of the addition. It really squares off a corner of the house, and this house is, is directly across from the courthouse on Second Street. You probably are all familiar with it. It would be within 12 feet of the required setback, and the existing house is already at that same distance, so it's not changing the setback. We held the public hearing, there were no comments received. Planning Commission recommended approval of the request.
All right. Well, I'll make the resolution, or make the motion to approve Resolution 2018-8.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? This is a great one for us to, like, to work on, like, as we're breaking, breaking things in, because it kind of gets us more familiar with the variance system, and it's kind of a no-brainer, so, so it's good.
It's the easiest one of the three.
Maybe we should have started with that.
Yeah, why wasn't that first?
Yeah, exactly.
I'm still learning.
Now you know how I think.
Oh, my God.
Start easy, then work your way up.
All right. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. All right, so now we get to move right along to stormwater plan updates. So, in front of you...
No, no.
Oh, there's one more.
Some more.
Oh, we have a discussion about this stuff. There we go. I totally, I was, I was done with the resolutions, and then I started moving on. Okay, so, there's been a discussion about lodging on the first floor of the downtown business zone. Downtown Waterfront, is that what the DW stands for?
Yeah, Core Downtown Waterfront.
There are actually two issues that were brought before the Planning Commission. You know, we probably should talk about the one that we didn't take any action on and felt that there wasn't any need to take any action on, just to inform the council of that.
Yeah, just to close the loop on that. You did receive some comments at your last meeting, and it was about fill and building height and measuring building height from existing elevations, and kind of all of that and what it entails. So, the Planning Commission had all of our regulations as they exist in their packet and an opportunity to discuss that and kind of decide what follow-up was appropriate, and they, they declined to do any further study on that. They felt like it just really wasn't a, a problem that needed to be addressed right now.
And in that, for that conversation, is that referring to the, the limit on fill at being 1,000?
Those provisions in the ordinance, yes.
Those provisions?
It's not really even a limit. It's, there is no limit on fill in our ordinance, there's no minimum requirement. 1,000 yards is when someone has to submit a, an erosion control plan to us, but we don't even tell them what that has to say in our ordinance, and so there's not a, we just don't have a lot of regulation when it comes to, to fill.
Yeah, I mean, we, we talked about, you know, kind of historically, you know, where could have, would have this applied or been, been of concern, and I think we could only raise a couple properties where fill had been brought in, in recent years, and it really didn't seem to create any issues or problems that, you know, were identified at that time. And those, those properties were the Dockin property over on Third Street between Sixth and Eighth, where they built a garage, and then above, above that, there were some fill where they built a garage, and then above that, there were some fill brought in, kind of on the non-existent Seventh Avenue West, you know, which is...
Yeah.
Big birch, you know, neck in there. And so there were, and again, there was a fair amount of fill brought in, and they were, generally these fill projects are, you know, have come in from street improvement projects. County Road 7 was being worked on, and they needed a place to bring fill, those property owners agreed to do that, and, you know, as it turned out, you know, really it was done and without impacting neighbors or creating any issue that, you know, seemed to be relevant. Those are the only, really the only situations I think we were able to identify that have brought in, you know, fill to any extent, and...
Now, moving beyond the fill conversation, or like, the conversation about fill specifically, there is language in the ordinance that says, you know, that you, you know, the height of a building shall not be above, you know, 30, was it 32 feet, 30 feet or...
30 and 35.
30 and 35. You know, but there isn't there, there's like a phrase in there as well that says, well, you know, or a height that impacts the visibility of the previous, or of the, of other property owners?
No.
We've got one zone where the limit is 30 feet, you can get a conditional use permit rather than a variance to go up to 35 feet if it doesn't have an impact on the...
Maybe that's what I saw, that might have been what I saw.
So, and no one has actually tried that path yet, so not sure how that will go.
So with that conversation, the Planning Commission decided that they didn't feel that there was a need to address the issue, that they felt the ordinance was still sufficient to deal with, you know, with that.
Okay.
So unless the council directs the Planning Commission to take some kind of action, I think the Planning Commission will probably not, well, they're not going to take it up.
I'm going to think on that one a little bit, because I, I mean, I do understand that, you know, having built on a hill, and especially, you know, as what I, you know, as the person who has solar on their, on their house, you know, I do think that being conscious of that, of that incline and the, not only the sightlines, but also those, the shadows from other properties, I just, I, it's completely hypothetical at this point, but it's something that, you know, trying to get ahead of the curve on this might not be a terrible thing for us to consider. And putting some, putting some language into that, that part of the ordinance, so that we can have, so that we have, can have some protections for those rights of the landowners above projects. However, you know, I would have to take a look at just about every property or every situation, one-on-one, to see if that actually was an issue, because we might be, you know, creating a solution for a problem we don't have.
Well, and I think that, that issue is, you know, I think, very much a different issue than what, what we've been talking about. I think what you're talking about is a solar access issue, which, you know, some communities have adopted.
And also view, I mean, you know, a view access and things like that.
I take it this complaint came out of what's happening on, what, Fourth Avenue West?
Yeah, on Todd Miller's property. And it wasn't such about, it wasn't a complaint about what's happening there, it was that that development triggered a thought process, and this person wanted to come and talk about their concerns about, not specifically that issue, but how that might play out on other properties.
Yeah, which is, which, which in essence is exactly what my concern is, is that, you know, there, there are hypothetical situations where this could be a significant issue in our, in our town. Most of the town, I think, has a steep enough slope that it wouldn't be much of a problem, but...
Well, I could think, I don't know, that I would appreciate something of that height in front of my home or surrounding.
Well, and the steeper the grade, the more fill you need to level it out.
Yeah, that's true.
Unless you dig into the hill.
Also increases the sightlines. I know that my property, that I own, is, you know, just about everybody has, has a story about my house, and, and one of the stories is that the landowner immediately below me built a great big garage, and that the people who owned my house then got really, really upset about that and, like, sold the property because, because that, you know, impacted their view. But it's not my, my situation, it doesn't bother me, but it's, it happens. So maybe something that we can, we can think on and see if we can, if there's an action in the future for that. So that's one.
That's one.
The other one?
So the second item that we took up discussion about was the, discussion about lodging uses on the first floor in the downtown core waterfront district, and the, we had a very, very good discussion about this. We had a number of downtown business owners that were present at the meeting that expressed concern about the, the opportunity for lodging to take place on the first floor in the downtown district and what that might mean to the, kind of the integrity, the commercial integrity of the downtown area. Some of those same business owners and individuals are here tonight, you know, and, you know, their comments were well appreciated. You know, and I think the, the Planning Commission, as they listened to the comments, you know, took it in and were concerned about what this might mean to the downtown area. The net result of the commission meeting was that the Planning Commission, on a two-to-one vote, asked the council to consider a moratorium in the downtown district for any lodging on the first floor, to give the Planning Commission time to study the issue and consider any adjustments to our ordinance. Have to say, I was the person that voted against that, you know, motion. It's not because I don't believe that there's an issue, it's because I don't believe that a moratorium is necessarily the means to solving the problem, or if there is a problem. I, I think this is an issue that needs to get, you know, probably a public process started regarding those that came before the Planning Commission last week, came because they had knowledge of the fact that the Planning Commission was going to be discussing this. It wasn't a public hearing, it wasn't any kind of, there wasn't a public notice sent out that informed people that this was going to be, there was going to be a discussion about this issue, so...
This was a public comment that prompted the Planning Zoning Commission to take up the converser, take up the topic? Or was it actually the line I had on the agenda?
It was a Planning Commission member that had raised this question, and a number of the downtown business, you know, owners had kind of, you know, supported that, that conversation, and so the Planning Commission did have that conversation. I think the agreement, I mean, the unanimous agreement is, is yes, we should continue this conversation in a more public fashion to make sure we have everybody involved, because it's not just the downtown business owners that are affected, it's the community that gets affected. And it really, the, the conversation had to do with community values, and do we want stores and restaurants and that in our downtown area? Do we want lodging to take, take over the first floors of our downtown core part of the community, so...
Do we have this happening now, correct? Just one business, or...
Yeah.
Yes.
Well, there's...
There's more than one, there's, we talked about a second one. Ogama property, I think, is talked about now.
They've, but they've talked about...
I mean, there could very well be lots of people that have talked about it, but there's one that it's happened at.
Currently, there's one.
There's one.
There's other buildings for sale, eight blocks away.
Right.
And there's other buildings where this could potentially happen, but...
Right.
There's vacant lots, there's, you know, there's all kinds of possibilities, but, I mean, that was the question I asked at the Planning Commission meeting, whether anybody was aware of an imminent threat, that there was going to be something that was going to happen that was, would, you know, significantly change our downtown area and, you know, made other than these conjectures that these properties are available, and I mean, yes, Ogama building has been talked about, but...
I don't think that anybody's going to argue with the, with the concern about, about the importance of the first floor of the downtown retail area. I mean, that, that's, you know, there's not, those buildings aren't going to, going to expand, you know, like, we can't, we can't get more of them in that area.
Well...
So...
I don't know, somebody built behind and went backwards and up, so...
I'm just saying this...
Would have thought there would be people that would argue with it, and surprisingly, at least of the few business owners that we have heard from, that have a financial interest in maximizing to the use that would, and lodging would probably be a much more valuable use than a lot of the things that are happening, and they've kind of expressed a desire to, to take that away from themselves. In, in effect, to protect something that they think is more important, so I'd really love to continue that conversation and get the rest of the downtown business owners involved and get the rest of the community involved and see where we're at on that.
So the question before the council is, does the council want to consider a moratorium on these first floor lodging uses in the downtown district? Or is it, or the instruction back to the council, or the commission to continue this conversation, to work towards some kind of resolution to the, to the question or problem?
So maybe a little background, what's a moratorium is in order? It's a word that we use, but really the tool that we would use is called an interim ordinance, and so you'd have to pass an ordinance, and there's specific statutory requirements about it, that you would declare your intent to study a particular zoning issue, and that part of that interim ordinance can be setting some limits on activities that can occur during a fixed study period. It's, it's a very powerful tool, because you're taking away property rights. So what you have to weigh, I think, is the risk of potential damage that can occur if some of these changes happen before you're done studying it versus the limits you're placing on people's property rights in, in the interim. I guess I would recommend that if you're, if you're serious about doing that, that we start our public process now with the conversation about that, and that you direct us, staff, the attorney and myself, to come back to your next meeting with a draft interim ordinance, and that we put notice out and let people come and talk to you about it. And I'm not suggesting that you do that, but if you're interested in an interim ordinance, that's the path I would recommend you take.
Well, and as a result of the Planning Commission meeting, the Planning Commission did ask Mike to come back at our next meeting with some additional information with regard to other communities that may have adopted, you know, regulations along these lines and give us some, some kind of guidance, you know, rather than just starting from scratch to, you know, come up with some kind of regulation or ordinance that would place a restriction.
I guess I'd like to see, I feel like I'm talking too much, but I guess I'd like to see, I'd like to see the commission still have discussions. I don't think we need a moratorium, we don't have, like you said, an imminent threat of it, but I do think it's something that, as a whole, that we would like to work with the business district to see what is in our best interest as a community. Doing a moratorium seems to me like an awful lot of work right now, without something really knocking at the door to, to do that, per se, but I would like to see us continue discussions and work with them.
Part of the purpose of a, of an interim ordinance is to provide time to study, and, you know, the time that it would take for us to pass an interim ordinance is that we would have to, we have to have it drafted, pass it, and then, and then have a second reading of that as well, in order for it to be enacted. So we're talking, you know, a month and a half, month, month and a half before this is, before an interim ordinance could go into effect. And, and I would agree with, with you guys that, that I don't, I don't see an imminent threat, like, I think that we have time to study this issue without the use of a, of a moratorium or an interim ordinance. And, and I would be, I would, I would, I would like to see, like what Kelly said, I would like to see the, see the conversation continue with, with more public involvement and thoughts on that. I, you know, I feel kind of torn on this one, because, because I totally get the importance of the downtown businesses, you know, I mean, we, I, I've heard of stories of some of these little ski towns where, you know, there's no businesses, there's nothing to do in these towns anymore other than places to sleep, because all of the businesses have gone to, to vacation rentals or lodging. And I, I don't think that that's, I don't think that's as much of a threat for us right now as it has been in those other places, and I think that we're getting on this ahead of the game fat, you know, enough that, that we're not going to lose, we're not going to lose any, any more properties, or, you know, anything that's going to be, going to be a really big shot to the, to the downtown businesses, if we give ourselves the time to have this conversation publicly. And I think that if we don't put a moratorium on it, it probably allows that conversation to happen a little bit more truthfully than, than if there is a moratorium on it. So that would be, be my thoughts on it. Any other, any other thoughts?
Is, what's the Planning Commission doing as far as putting together some sort of study on, like, maybe the potential areas this could impact, or...
Yeah, I don't think we have very much...
So right now, it's just kind of a...
To talk about yet. I think the, the idea was to have an answer to that very question by the next time they have a meeting, which is three weeks away, so...
Yeah, I think the idea was to provide the Planning Commission with some background information to help us kind of assess, kind of where, where we're at and what, what potentially could be done, and then to establish a process to, you know, figure out how to move that forward. I mean, I would hope that we would be able to have, have this assessment and go through this public process relatively quickly. I, I think that, you know, one of the things we did with the moratorium for the, the last time we passed that with regard to the big box commercial, I, I don't think it, we ever did really address the issues in our ordinance very well that caused that to happen, and I would hope that with this conversation, rather than just passing a moratorium, that we would actually address the problem and deal with the issue and create a solution, so... I would hope that the Planning Commission would come to a resolution of this, you know, relatively quickly.
And I do think, you know, there's a reason why this came up, you know, there's, the conversations about losing downtown retail is why this came up. And if there's more information that comes to the fore that, that, you know, is directly impacting this consideration, like, we need to know that. Like, we need to have people tell us that, so that we can, so that we can react to that, because otherwise, otherwise if we don't know, then we can't, we can't react to it. I, you know, especially after the conversation about the big box stores, I'm pretty, I'm, I feel pretty cautious about using an interim ordinance, largely because of what Mike said, this is, I mean, it's a powerful tool, and it is a tool that takes away property rights. And, and I, like, in my brain, in this council, it, that's not something that I, that I feel very, very comfortable doing. So, so that, yeah, that's where, that's where I'm at with it.
What's, I think it's the nuances of how something like this could, could get incorporated into our ordinance, because we know that we have first floor lodging in downtown hotels, motels that have existed for years without any issue. It's only because of this newest addition that we've had any, you know, concern raised, so we certainly wouldn't want to prohibit somebody from doing what has historically been done in the downtown area and done maybe properly or with certain standards or care. So I think it's the nuances of how an ordinance would be addressing this issue, I think, that are, that are relevant and need to be carefully thought out.
And really, some agreement on what the problem is that we're trying to solve, too. There was a lot of different issues that got brought into the conversation with the Planning Commission, and it's a complex issue, if you let it be, but it's also, we can focus on some pretty simple things, I think, that address what most people are saying they're concerned about, but it's worth going through a little process to clarify that and make sure that that's true before we move forward on it.
Well, I would, I would feel comfortable charging the Planning Zoning Commission to, to continue pursuing this and studying this situation. I don't see an imminent threat, and if that, if that changes, then I think that we can, you know, we can take action on that at our next meeting. But I don't know if you guys agree with that, or if you think of a different pathway for it, but I do think that we should have some additional engagement and some additional conversation about this, to, to decipher what, what the problem is and what the solutions, you know, could be that would directly impact the problem or the, or the concern.
Yeah, and just for the new counselors, there's, there's a couple ways that these types of ordinances get changed, and with regard to a zoning ordinance change, it can be initiated by the council, it can be initiated by the Planning Commission, or it can be initiated by a public request, so in this case, I think the Planning Commission is already starting down that path. So if we just get concurrence with the council that, you know, you want them to continue to pursue that, I mean, I think that that would be sufficient. I don't know if there's any action that the council needs to take.
Yeah, and head nodding is good concurrence, I think. It works just fine.
I'm in agreement with that, and I would hope that would be okay with those that are in attendance and interested in that. in that.
You know, and I'm willing to, I'm willing to sit down with you guys and talk this through a little bit more and gather some more information as well because I wasn't at the planning and zoning commission. You got just a brief comment?
Yeah, I got a comment. But it should be understood that there is absolutely no new businesses for downtown right now. If somebody in this room right now wanted to start a business in town, they would have to, by building, not turn it into short-term rental to operate a business. There is, there is nothing available right now. So there's zero growth for your downtown business economy. And the loss of one more space would just make that, you know, further into the negative.
So, yes, so that, so that comment builds on the, you know, the loss of one unit is significant to the downtown space. I do, I do, I have seen some head nodding. I do think that we should move forward with continuing to, continuing to take a look at this. I'm interested in sitting down and chatting with concerned business owners and residents about this as well, so then I can get some more perspective and a little bit more information on it as well. But I think that planning and zoning should do that. It seems like we've gotten nodding of heads, so let's keep, let's keep moving down that, down that route. Okay? Any final comments or thoughts on that?
Nope.
Okay, then we're going to move, we're going to move on then to the soil and water, the BOR, Storm Water Management Plan. So we've got some preliminary results here and you look on the, on the, on the second page of this, we've got this.
What, nobody wants to talk about downtown flooding? Come on.
Come on, people. Everybody was holding their breath.
I guess we wore them all right then.
Everybody was holding their breath and now we're going to talk about the good stuff. Well, anyway. So we've got some, they did some simulations for us and they put together some preliminary results and I think I'll let you walk through this a little bit more specifically. But, you know, we've got some, some projects on page, the page of this four.
Yeah, we're going to look at those.
Projects on page four that could potentially address some of the concerns from the preliminary results of the downtown flooding. So for those of you folks who are new here, yeah, we're jumping in.
But this is not a new project.
No, it's not a new project.
Or a new problem to our community.
Absolutely not.
A new approach, we'll call it.
New approach.
And so how did this approach come about? Well, everybody knows about the public comments that have been received and of course we didn't need someone to tell us that there's an issue because we are located here. The approach though, that's new is Soil and Water contacted the city last year with some funding ideas for getting a storm water plan put together. It's about an $85,000 project, so it's not a small endeavor of which the city has $25,000 and the rest is coming from other sources, thanks to partners of the county and Soil and Water. And more about that also in the future. But for now, the results that we've got, they've kind of went through the background quickly on their, beginning of their memo of the efforts that have, that have come about. They have a model that's created based on a lot of data that they collected in the field. And they've done some scenarios for us and they've talked a little bit about goals. The community goals that we're going to identify in this plan are flooding, particularly downtown, but also related to the village ditch and water quality generally in the harbor, but also in other places where, you know, we have an opportunity to measure that or address it. So the first scenario that we're looking at is this downtown flooding model and the council was asked to consider whether they had a goal that they could use or give to our modelers so that they could try and show you, well, what's it going to take to achieve that? And the goal has two components, a depth of water and in the parking lot at the drain in the parking lot is where we're measuring that depth from. And we looked at a big colorful map that showed, well, if it's this deep, this is the area that it covers and if it's this deep. And then also the duration that there is water in the parking lot. So the council said, we'd like to see that the goal be not to go more than 12 inches deep for more than 12 hours. And the scenario then is modeled after that. So you can see this great chart on page two of six shows, well, the results of depth over time based on a lot of different scenarios of fixes that we can do in the community. We won't go into very much of that, but you see that the blue dotted line is the parking lot level. So when water gets above that, there's water in the parking lot. And the red dotted line is 12 inches above the parking lot level. So when water gets above that, it's above the goal that you set. And then the time in hours, you can see what the, how long it takes to, for the water to get down below that level.
You notice that those hour periods are pretty significantly long.
Yeah, it's their long time because it takes a long time.
For days.
The storm that's being modeled here is a two-year storm. That doesn't seem like much and yet that's basically the storm that we had last year. They talk about, well, what does that mean in terms of inches of water in, over a period of time? So the, the two-year 24-hour storm is something that our consultants are asking if the council is willing to add to their goal. Because for instance, if you wanted it to be no more than 12 inches of water in that parking lot for no more than 12 hours, after a 10-year storm event, we can't do it.
No.
Based on these options, we can't even come close.
Well, and another, yeah, and another thing that this keeps in mind is a 24-hour design storm is like if we want the water to be below that level after 12 hours, but the storm lasts for a day, then how is, is it, like, how does that impact?
It's okay. It doesn't impact, the two-year storm is a particular amount of rainfall within a 24-hour period. So it's still, you know, you can see the ramping up is based on amount of time that there's rain falling and they're imagining that, you know, a fixed rate over a 24-hour period to look at a storm like that. So, and, and you know, that's the 10-year storm and then the 25-year storm, 4.3 inches in 24 hours, well, that's even, even harder to achieve. So that, there, I think they're just suggesting that a realistic way to use 12 inches and 12 hours is for a two-year storm event. There's this great now table, which is starting to try to answer the question, and the question that the council of course asked right away when you were asked to set a goal is, well, what's it going to cost to set a goal? And this is a bit of a chicken and an egg thing. And so we're, we're going through an iterative process where you're going to have to decide, you set a goal, now you're going to see what the cost is and you're going to have to decide, are we still interested in this or do we need to reevaluate our goal? Some background, I think most of this is pretty self-explanatory, but a lot of these projects are combinations of different things and they all work together in ways that are hard to show on this table. So for instance, the top line item, the Third Street Inlet Bypass is fixed. What that means is there are storm water inlets along Third Street where we have a storm sewer in place that aren't catching all the water from above Third Street. And so some of the water from above Third Street bypasses Third Street and continues on down the hill. And if we were to regrade those intersections and rebuild the catch basins so that, well, all, I don't know if that's possible, but we'll just use that for modeling terms, all of that water was captured at Third Street, then that's what we're talking about with this project here. Just doing that doesn't have a very measurable effect on the behavior of the parking lot across the street.
It says half an inch.
And it also costs an awful lot of money. And so when they do the costs per hour of flood reduction at the end, it's just one way to try and measure it. It doesn't measure up very well. But if you don't do it, none of these other fixes work very well because it's also something where as the storm gets bigger and there's more bypasses, it just exacerbates all the issues downhill. And so even though the way that they've written this table and then the cost per hour figure looks like that's not a good solution, they actually recommend that that one needs to be done regardless of what other solutions you pick. So their combined scenario, we'll skip to the bottom and then we'll go back if there's any questions, you have any of these in particular. Their combined scenario that they created that actually meets almost your goal is 11.2 inches. They actually revised that to the duration to 15 hours and not 12, that it's above the time inlet. And what does it take to do that? Well, let's go to the left side first because that's easier to talk about than the right side. The Third Street Inlet Bypasses are fixed. Both diversion options A and B are done. So diversion A is some of the catch basins at First Avenue West and on Highway 61 are allowing water from that intersection to get to downtown and we could try to divert it a different direction instead. And then diversion option B is along Second Street from Broadway to cul-de-sac. What they're talking about there is the road that goes to the sewer plant. And there are some catch basins in the highway and above that are collected there that end up coming to First Avenue East. And instead we try to divert them towards the sewer plant and directly into the lake that way. So if we do all those diversions plus we add a pump to the, that's a one cubic foot per second pump to pump out the pond behind the co-op. And we upsize the First Street pipe so that it actually doesn't get full very quickly like it can right now. And then we also do some new BMPs, which are basically finding other ways to let the water infiltrate into the parking area and other drainage areas that are here. All of those things together and then we can meet the goal. And what does that cost? Well, that's $2 million is what that costs to do all those things. So that's what we wanted to learn by doing this report is a better understanding of how water is flowing and what's creating the problem. And I think we have a really good understanding of that now the model is really, really working well for that. And then also an expert opinion on ways, what are best management practices that we can use to address that issue? And here's a list of quite a few of them. And then a cost estimate to meet a particular goal that you've established and we have that here now. It's hard to say what to do next, given the information that we've got, however.
Well, I think that one of the important things that we can do to get some creative or some productive conversation on this is to look at the pros and cons because in the cons, there are some, there are some significant ones in there that we need to decide as a councilman, as a community, whether or not we feel comfortable with those cons for any of these. So you may notice that, that pretty much any of these bypasses or any of these pumping options have the con of that the runoff isn't treated before it's discharged into the lake. And we need to figure out if that's, I mean, to a certain extent, that's not going to be something that we're going to be able to control 100% of the time. You know, the nature of, of the geography around us is that that water's going to end up in the lake.
And right now, are all of those drainages untreated right now?
Yes.
Yes.
If they go anywhere except that parking lot, they're untreated. If they bypass the Third Street Storm Sewer, which will take them directly to the lake, then they end up in that parking lot, causing lots of problems, but being treated before they're going to the lake. And so here we have conflicting goals, unfortunately.
And that, that's something that's, that's a hard situation for me to deal with. You know, we have to protect the water quality of Lake Superior, you know, and the harbor.
And my trout.
And the trout.
Can you give some information on how the Highway 61 project was incorporated into this or if it has been?
Yeah, so, and let's, is there anything about any of these options people want clarified before we move off of this table?
Well, I think even before you get to the table, I mean, I had some concerns just about the, the two-year storm capacity. I mean, that seems like that's, I mean, it's going to happen every two years predictably.
Yes.
Not once every two years. Could happen twice this summer and not for the next, another two years, but the fact is it's going to happen on a regular basis. You know, what I don't quite understand is how to relate the two-year storm to a 10-year storm or a 25-year storm in relationship to what we've seen happen out here because we seem to get flooding in the parking lot for an extended period of time under current conditions.
Right, so they did a chart for us earlier in the process where we saw, just based on the model, right? Not based on actual observations from 2017, but based on what known rainfall amounts for 2017 and how the model would predict that happens, that there was a dozen times that there was significant water in the parking lot just last year. And so one of the results of this is that if we do the combined scenario that they're suggesting, then the model says, well, only one time out of those dozen would there have been measurable water in the parking lot at all.
Okay.
And that would have been the big storm where there was, it was a two-year event and there was significant flooding. There still would have been, but it would have been limited to 12 inches for 15 hours.
And have they run, have they run a, some kind of, some kind of a model for a 100-year storm?
We're just, we're just Atlantis at that point.
No, so they did the model and they just reported the actual, the depth and the time on page two here for the 10 and 25-year storm.
I mean, I just wonder where we are with 100-year storm and, you know, I mean.
So the reason they didn't model that is because generally for storm water, you don't design for that. I mean, that, you don't even design for the 25-year event. You might design for the 10-year event, but even that is pretty excessive. There's just no cost-effective way to prevent anything short of a 100-year storm from causing that.
Yeah, I understand the mitigation part of it. I'm just wondering what that potential impact could be to the downtown area with a 100-year storm under, under this new scenario.
Well, it's possible that, I mean, it would be just a matter of them plugging it in. Now, I guess I would recommend we don't bother with that because we can use their time on other things instead. But if that's something that you'd like to see, we can have them do that.
Well, I think if it is something that would significantly impact the downtown commercial district, you know, to a degree that we don't want to see happen, you know, we should at least have some awareness of the potential for that to occur. And what, what might be our short-term ways to mitigate some of that if we are in the midst of a deluge nor'easter that, you know, is going to dump 10 inches of rain? I mean, do we want to be in a position like Duluth, Duluth has been and then try to rebuild the downtown after it's been wiped off the map?
And, and, I mean, you just, the cost benefit analysis of what it would cost to prevent that from happening is probably more than what it costs to rebuild after it's done when you look over that timeframe. The, even just focusing on the two-year event, I think we learned enough to know what we need to do about it that would still address the 100-year storm. You know, you can't prevent the more significant effects of it, but you're still going to improve it significantly by doing these things. So I guess I don't know that I see the value in spending their time and resources on actually giving us a picture of it, but, but if you want to see that, we could ask them to do that.
Well, I don't know how complex that would be, but if they're, if they're, they can model that and computer, you know, the computer can generate that information relatively easily, I think it would be at least valuable to have that information.
So if it becomes onerous and really expensive, don't do it, but otherwise it'd be interesting to see.
Like here currently with, with the combined process here, if you're doing a two-year storm, so that's going to be gone in 12 hours, a 10-year storm, the flood duration reduces to 21 hours and then a 25-year storm, the flood duration is 32 hours. So that even with the 25-year storm, we're looking at a pretty comparatively quick recovery.
And I wonder if that, as the storm gets bigger, the recovery time will proportionally decrease as well because there will be, there will be other outlets, you know, at different elevations for the water as, as it strikes downtown.
It's one of the things they actually found that was, they didn't predict that when there's a larger storm, a lot of the things that don't normally flow downtown start flowing downtown instead because when it, you know, builds up to a depth in an intersection and everything starts going in different directions. So that, you know, it's just interesting that they saw that and it led to some of these suggestions about. And it led to some of these suggestions about, well, catch basins in places you maybe wouldn't have thought you needed to change things in order to affect what happens in that parking lot.
Well, I mean, it's somewhat reassuring to, to see that even in a 25-year storm, you're reducing that, that maximum depth from 39 inches to 25 inches, which is a significant reduction.
It's less than there was last fall.
Well, and, and, and that would be helpful, I think, especially if we, you know, are looking at investing money into these stormwater improvements to let, certainly let the public know that there's, there's a level of protection, not just be for the two-up, for the two-year storm, but also a level of protection from those larger storms that might occur, or that will occur.
Yes.
It's not that they might occur, they will occur at some point.
Hmm. Yeah, because the pricing on just whatever they have for the, the pumps, you know, from one cubic foot per second to two, kind of marginally, the price goes up. And if, if there were a potential for a 100-year storm, you could potentially just have a larger pump.
I mean, we can also, if pumping's a strategy, we, we can rent a pump and bring it in. We have our own pumps. I mean, there's ways to, we, we wouldn't want that to be the solution that we have to do 12 times a year.
No.
To, to portably bring in a pump. But if we're talking about a significant event, that's a reasonable response. Just get a big six-inch water trailer mounted diesel-powered pump and start going.
I think the city of New Orleans has a series of pumps.
They do.
They have for every rainstorm.
Yeah. I mean, this is not quite that bad, thankfully.
That's right, yeah.
So let's, let's talk about your other, your earlier question, though. Because I think it's a good way to talk about how do we move forward on this and what are the next steps? Which is, how does this relate to Highway 61 project? We've got this $2 million construction estimate. This is not, none of these projects have been designed, right? So we're talking about just a basic construction estimate. We don't really know what it would cost. But we do know where we might do some of those things, and a lot of the work might interact with Highway 61. So they've shown this picture now of what's the, the Second Street bypass. So we're looking at this one here. It's got, just to orient yourself, that green line is on Second Street. You can see the Grand Murray Condos building with the white roof kind of in the middle of the page. SA is, is there. You can see their canopy, and the sewer treatment plant is just off the right side of the page. So, a new storm sewer is that green dashed line. And we abandoned then a catch basin that comes down First Avenue East and feeds the downtown, and instead, we catch that water on the highway and send it east of there. And then we, and then we have a low-flow diversion that goes on Second Avenue East as well that kind of feeds into that. And, and reconstruct the storm sewer. We already have an outlet that's on Second Street, but we would reconstruct it because it's not sized for feeding all the rest of this water to it. So all the things that occur outside of the right-of-way would be up to us to do, but we're, we're reconstructing Highway 61 in 2019. And so now, how do we incorporate the things that we would want to see into MINDOT's project? Well, that, that's where we're at. They're, they're really just getting into design engineering now on Highway 61. What I've asked EOR to do is, why don't you give me a number on what it would take to design these things? And also describe a process for how we're going to incorporate that into the MINDOT project. The idea that a lot of that money is going to get rolled into MINDOT project budget rather than having to come from our own coffers. In particular, if there's a lot of water from the highway that's being fed into some of these systems. So that's, that informs a strategy that we're not just going to go borrow $2 million and do all these things next year. What we're going to do is look for opportunities and look for the right times to do these projects, look for the right funding opportunities, look for the right partners. And over a period of time, we will do these up until the point where, where they're all kind of ready to go.
Because we have certain street improvement plans that, or street improvement projects that could include some of the elements of this.
Yeah, I mean, potentially we do, but even if we don't, we're going to piece it out into chunks that we can handle, and we're going to look for those kinds of crossovers where we can dig the street up once and do four things instead of dig the street up four times.
Right.
So.
So will any, any of this work involve changing this downtown watershed?
So now, that's this, maybe this picture.
That's the BMP map. And I'm a little confused by this whole area off to the east and why that is flowing into the downtown and not being, not going in a different direction.
So the map we just looked at would absolutely change this watershed. It would take some of that stuff that's in the east that's getting to downtown now that maybe we didn't think was before this model was created, and find a way to divert it from getting to downtown. There's also, I mean, the, the dashed lines are going up into the intersections on Third Street, but we know one of the problems is water from above that watershed is crossing that barrier.
Right.
And getting into the downtown. And so that watershed's even bigger than, than what's being drawn here. So it would be the intention to, to definitely change that watershed and get some of this water to go a different direction.
So these are, the, the green spots on this map then are the, are the proposed BMPs that they've, that they're, that they're suggesting.
The, all the different colored shaded areas are BMPs.
Right, well, the rain gardens.
So, yeah, what does that mean? Tree trenches, what they're saying is, you need 1,000 feet of tree trenches somewhere on the highway in the corridor that's feeding into downtown to be a part of the solution. It's just a way for water to, rather than put it in a pipe and send it somewhere, to try and let it inflow right there. And, you know, that's not designed, they've got this drawn in there, but that's not really even the suggestion that that's where it has to happen. It's just a placeholder for an idea right now. And then that idea can be explored as we continue to work with MINDOT and their design engineering on where, and what I would think our strategy is going to be is, let's find everything that we could possibly turn into a tree trench or some sort of stormwater best best managed practice in the right-of-way, and let's get it all on there and then start backing off from that where we needed to do something else or where we decided we're not willing to pay for it. Bank stabilization, you don't see any of that in this drawing. Bio retention, it's, you know, looking for creating a green space or some kind of rain garden type space where the, there's water storage. And there's a lot of that that's potentially called for here. Whether or not some of these are actually opportunities, they haven't been studied very far. This is more of a brainstorming exercise at that level than a feasibility study. And then parking lot improvement, well, there's a lot of different things that they would talk about in terms of parking lot improvement. And again, it's really focused on the idea of getting water to have more opportunities to infiltrate rather than the way we have it working now. Then the rain gardens all along, different boulevards, and there's a lot of different boulevards where rain gardens are possible. So what that probably looks like is an upscaled rain garden program where we make it available to people that are interested in doing it. We've done that a half a dozen times in the city, and maybe we just need to add some funding and get some partners or, or find a different maintenance strategy, or whatever it takes to go from six rain gardens to 50 rain gardens or 100 rain gardens to, to help keep the water from getting downtown in the first place. And of course, that also deals with water quality. And then rainwater harvesting, they're looking at big roofs and saying, is there a way for those properties to store some of that water in tanks rather than let it just go into the parking lot and then reuse it for something? And in a hotel, for instance, you could potentially reuse that rainwater to do laundry or a lot of other gray water uses, a lot of other things. So they're just opportunities to look at, and maybe there's a partnership where those businesses can find some benefit out of it and we get some benefit out of it. That's where we're at on that.
Well, I would wonder as well about the, you know, and I don't know anything about the complexities of the roofs that are identified for rainwater harvesting, but, you know, that could be as, you know, and I say simple, that could be as simple as redirecting the gutters to the lakeside of the building, you know, and, and, and encouraging that water to go that way rather than this way, because the water that's coming off the roof isn't going to be the contamination problem that we have coming off the pavement.
Yeah. That, I mean, that, all of those issues are right now at the brainstorming level, need some feasibility work before we really know what's the right way to do it. And so, yeah, what, how real is it as an opportunity? How much would it actually cost? That needs a lot more work before we know for sure. So that's the results so far. This has gone really quickly. I'm super impressed with the work that EOR has done for us. The, just the capability of modeling is so much advanced compared to where we were at the last time we did this. And the partners that we've had in this has been, have made it a real success in my mind. And, and that's a good segue maybe into some of these next issues if people don't have any more questions about this.
You know what I'd be really interested in seeing is on page, is that page five? On page five, you know, they, they show this, this option B storm sewer going and cutting across Highway 61 at Second Street, and then following that along to the storm water, or to the sewer plant, and then, and then having an outlet into the East Bay over there. I would be interested in seeing how that would impact the, the blue dotted line on the back page, the drainage to downtown. Would that be, be enough to effectively cut that, that left arm off of the, off of the drainage to downtown? Because, you know, I, and of course, I need to get a little bit more information on this, but it seems to me like if we are able to lessen the space that's within that little blue dotted line...
Well, they took it to the next level of detail. So rather than, you know, dwelling on where the watershed is, they talk about what effects it has in terms of the parking lot. Because that's the easiest way, I think, for us to demonstrate what are we getting for the money that we would spend? Because all the water ends up there.
And it's interesting to see the, if you look at the simulation results, where, where they, they talk about the different techniques. So, so the, the top techniques here, we got, you know, a green dotted line, a maroon solid line, and a blue dotted line. And those are all the diversion tactics that we have. And they, they go up to the, to the max, they flatten out, and then they start going back down. The BMPs are the, are that, you know, the circular dotted line there. And they go up, and then they, they plateau for a little bit, and then they start going down. And then the pumps just, you know, they, they reach a peak and then they just go down, you know, on a, on a pretty regular curve.
Yeah.
And I think that's really, that's important for us to have that in mind, too, that we're having different techniques that, that have different timelines for, for action.
And they, they have to work together. And that's the most important thing that they brought out in this report, is that any of these on their own aren't very effective. And even the ones that, that do one thing really well, don't do it really well if we don't have it in combination with the other stuff, too. So you really have to do all of this in order for it to be effective.
Yeah, because even with, say you had a, a four cubic foot pump, it's going to get rid of everything really quick, but that initial surge is still going to get you...
Still going to flood deep.
Way above there.
Yeah.
And it's going to take, you might get rid of it in six hours, but it's still going to be 20 something inches.
Yeah.
And then we're not treating our stormwater.
Right.
Because that, that much water moving that fast, like, that's a lot of water.
Well, I still, I'm really curious to see what a pump even looks like. We've talked about a lot of different ways to get water from that pond to the lake. All of them scare me, because the lake is going to treat them harshly. And, so if it's anything other than a Bellagio fountain that shoots water about 200 feet out of the lake, I guess I don't know how we avoid the lake shore interaction that busts things up.
I kind of liked that idea.
Yeah, me too.
Right from the center of the, of the co-op lot, just, or the co-op pond, just shoot it out?
Yeah.
Especially one of those winter storms, where it could freeze and get the big icicles out there.
Now we're talking.
Yeah. Well, we could be, what, what an attraction.
Could be ice climbing on the entirety of downtown from the mess that that creates.
Well, that, actually, the winter is something that concerns me a little bit about it, because this modeling is assuming that our pipes aren't frozen, and we know we can now get fairly significant rain in wintertime conditions sometimes in November and December.
January.
And January, yeah.
Yeah.
And now, on the flip side, we're going to see it again, and even into April, where a lot of our culverts are still pretty frozen, and we're going to get significant rain and...
Did we invite them to, to consider that, or no?
No. And, but they invited us to consider it in the sense that they said we should be out there right now taking some pictures about where there is water that's not getting into the catch basins and where it is collecting.
So like, right out here?
Yeah, like across the street, for instance, where, the, under that puddle is a catch basin that pipes back across to this side of the road, and then that way, and then that way. And, well, it doesn't right now, as you can see.
Yeah, and you can see that one here.
I mean, that's a, that's a pretty common wintertime maintenance sort of activity to, to deal with frozen stuff, but it's not an easy one to deal with. It's really tricky, so. Let's talk about good news for a little bit, can we?
Well, I think that this is, I think this is, this is exciting news nonetheless. I mean, that we're getting information back.
Great information. It's really exactly what we needed to deal with what's going on over there. We know a lot more about it and what we can do about it.
Well, and I think it's still appropriate with what's happening with Highway 61 to try to tie them together.
Oh, yeah.
Rather than two years later, let's dig things up and start.
Yeah. We're, we're going to make sure that what happens with that project is going to work in concert with what we intend to do. It could even mean that we start some of these projects this summer in, in preparation of what happens next year. So how are we going to do that? I'm glad you asked. It turns out that folks that have money to deal with stormwater stuff like people who do studies and think about in a real organized way what their issues are, what their goals are, and how they intend to approach it. And City of Grand Murray is, I think, the first community in this Lake Superior North One Watershed One Plan area that has conducted the study, although I wouldn't say we're quite done. We're done enough that people are happy that we're doing this and are rewarding us with some money. So you can see here that of the money that this group had to spend, they are going to do some grant administration, they're going to give 246 of it to us, and we're calling it Highway 61 BMPs, but really, it's anything that is on this plan, we, we really have to clarify what we're going to spend it on in, in pretty short order, as a matter of fact. $45,000 for Coastal Zone Erosion Hazard Program, and then $61,000 to do for Grand Murray's stormwater at the Village Ditch. The City of Grand Murray, because of this plan, is getting the lion's share of these funds. And I think it's to our credit that, that that's happening, and it's really due to the efforts of Cook County Soil and Water to make this plan happen and to help us through this process. So that's great. There's some money, and we're going to find the best way to leverage that money with the Highway 61 project to get as much of the stuff as we can. And then we'll go look for some more.
I think this is, this is really awesome. And, and I do have to say, just a couple of pieces, you know, kind of bridging into my, into my, my council report. So I just got back from, from St. Paul. I spent the last two and a half days down there lobbying legislators. And I ran into Elena Hansel and, and Theresa Berg down there, or Oberg, and, and, and they were down there talking about this stuff. And when I was down there, I ran into Duane Hill, who's the district engineer for, for MINDOT. And, and we all were kind of like in the same area when I ran into him, and I was like, "Hey, stormwater! We're working on that, too." And it was, there was a lot of really cool synchronicities in that, too. And, and Duane seemed to, he seemed to be pretty excited that we would have resources and interest in, in having a stormwater plan to be a part of that project. So, so that was really, that was awesome. It was a really happy coincidence that that, that happened.
We do have some work to do, though, when it comes to convincing MINDOT that of their...
It's part of their cost.
Their responsibilities financially in this project, so.
Yeah.
We're going to keep working on that.
Yes. So that's something that we have to do. But the bottom line for, for this conversation about the funding is that when you see the guys from, from Cook County Soil and Water, give them a big thumbs up, because, I mean, they've really been working hard on this, and it's, and, and we're the ones that are going to benefit from it directly. I mean, the whole county's water quality is going to, is going to benefit, but this is a huge part of our project, which is really great. So, you know, it's one-eighth of the total cost of this project, which is awesome. It's a good place to get started.
Good start, yeah. It's a great start.
And so because we're going to be receiving money...
This is actually for money they already agreed to give us.
Yeah.
So this happens every once in a while. We already talked last year about the funding plan for paying for the study, and they brought a lot of the money to the table from different places. We all said, "That sounds great. We've already hired the consultant, we were already paying the consultant, and, you know, we're not concerned about getting reimbursement." But now Soil and Water's saying, "Well, we actually need some documentation about this deal." Well, that makes a lot of sense. So this is the documentation of the deal we already made with them.
A memorandum of agreement.
Yeah.
Has the compensation terms in it, and the rules that, that oversee this agreement. So it's...
And the funding here is actually more than we're intending to spend right now. So the total funding that's available for this project is $108,450, and what we've hired the consultants for is less than $85,000, so there's some, there's some room there, which is good. But if you wouldn't mind, please approve this memorandum of agreement between City of Grand Murray... between City of Grand Marais and Cook County Soil and Water and Cook County, all the funding partners that we have for this project.
Is there a motion to do so?
I still move.
So moved. Is there a second?
A second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion on this? Great partnership. Can you guys catch on real quick? I like that.
Here to be part of the team.
Yeah. Great. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. All right, wonderful. So we'll keep working on this, the stormwater plan, to get finalized ideas about that. Keep, look through this stuff, and if you want any additional information, we can get you the previous stormwater plan that was done for the downtown, which is, I mean, really, this information is so much more thorough than that information and a lot easier to understand.
And the most recent work, other than this, is 15 years old now, so...
And the other stuff was interesting, though, because it was done when the lake level was much lower. And even though that doesn't impact the retention basin very much itself, it's just interesting, the assumptions that are in that versus what we probably should assume now that the water level is up 30 inches from that time. But anyway, that's a side conversation. So the last thing we have, council and staff reports. So we have, we've had some meetings in the past couple of weeks. And we typically just go down the, just go down. So we'd start with Kelly, and then go down, and you tell us, give us a brief update of meetings that you went to, and anything that happened.
I've been contacted by the Y, so I will meet with Emily Marshall Friday after work to get some information. And then Monday, we'll attend my first meeting of the Y Board.
Awesome. Very good.
That's it. I'm done.
Until you remember something else.
Let's see. That chair usually forgets, and by the time somebody goes by, they remember something, so... Just a couple of quick things. One, that the Sawtooth Bluff Master Plan is coming to a public meeting before the County Parks and Trails Commission on Monday, March 26, from 5:00 to 7:00 at the Commissioner's Room. The plan is available right now online on the ARDC website. Is it available on the city website at all?
No.
And I don't know if it's on the county website. It might be. But I know it's for sure available on the...
Let's see about getting that on the...
The ARDC website.
Sure.
It's interesting reading. You know, I think it's been a good process. And this is the opportunity for people to show up and, you know, exercise their opinion about what's being proposed and, you know, participate. The second thing, I was down in St. Paul last week at the Capitol, too, and went and visited Representative Eklund, talked to him about the Grand Marais Harbor project. And of course, he's on board with that. But, you know, it's a project that's requiring state bonding. It's a DNR project, actually, that they're asking the city to be solid supporters of. In fact, we've submitted the request to have this included in the state bonding bill. And hopefully, that will happen. You know, we've made good faith investment in building our new Public Works facility and investing in that, so that can be moved out of the site. And that site can be made available this summer. We're going to be doing removal of those buildings and working to restore that site. So we've done what we can, I think. And I tried to stress with him that we've made a significant financial investment in moving that project forward. Now it's up to the state to step forward and do their part, which is to make the money available to do the project that we all seem to want completed, so...
Tim, is there any way you can just give me a very brief description of what that project would look like?
I might have the handout in my bag.
Okay.
Because this is one of the things that I went down to talk about in that...
We'll get to the handout.
We'll get to the handout. It's basically the public access, moving the public access from Artist Point over here over into the campground, improving it so that it's actually a protected boat launch.
Safe harbor?
It's not going to be a safe harbor, no. It's going to have, it's going to have, it's going to be like an elbow. So it would be possible for a ship to go in there in the case of an emergency, but it's a boat launch. It's not a harbor.
So no expanded docking slips or anything like that?
No. This is access. This is just access.
Access, park, and parking area.
Okay.
I'll look for that and see if I have a copy of it in my bag.
I think the project is, I can't remember the dollar amount.
2.3.
2.3 million dollar project.
There is some brick wall construction to protect the boat launch. Doesn't create a safe harbor, but it does attempt to create a safe boat launch, anyway. Which is a big chunk of the money.
So we can show you that.
Yep. I also talked to Rob about the Getchigami Trail Bonding Request. That's not the city's request, but it's been requested, it's supported by the Cook County Chamber and a number of other organizations. You know, he's already introduced a bill to support that request. And that's for the extension of the Getchigami from the east or west end of the city to Cutface Creek Wayside Rest.
I believe, I thought that funding was already...
Oh, no, that's...
You're talking about Lutson to downtown.
Yes. And for the, yes, there's, that's a, yes. The next project that's going to start this next summer is that section from the west end to Cutface, the...
West end of the city.
West end of the city to, yeah.
It'd be awesome if we could get from the west end to Cutface. That'd be great. It's a huge...
And the next project is to complete a section of trail from the Ski Hill Road to downtown Lutson. And that would be for engineering and construction. There's also money to do the engineering for the Cutface Creek to Cascade State Park in that bonding bill. And there's, I think, two other small...
One of them is Silver Bay. There's a connection in Silver Bay that needs to be done.
It's a design and engineering, yeah. The only one that calls for construction is the Lutson Project. So it's always down there for that. You know, they're on board with it. So it's always nice when you're down in St. Paul to stop in and visit legislators. They like to hear from you and know it, or issues of concern. I know the Chamber went down with a contingent this week. Mary Somas was down there. I'm not sure who else was there, but I know a number of people were down doing their work, so... Then just the last item is just to clarify that next week's, or next council meeting, we're getting the Highway 61 consent conversation.
Yep.
And MINDOT will be here in, you know...
Yes.
In their entirety.
I'm not sure what contingent is arriving in.
In some capacity.
There was some conversation about making sure there was enough people so that they could take the plane.
Oh, wow.
You have to offer us the plane.
7:47, you know, it's a...
Not exactly.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Seaplane?
That'd be hilarious.
The ice is out?
That's all I have, so...
We had a park board meeting last week. And there's a good trend of reservations increasing this year over last year. February was up 19% over last year compared to January was 12% above last year. So that's when, speaking of more projects that are going to be going down down there, that helps to make some of those things more possible to talk about. We mostly just talked about two elements on the 61 related to that project, which is the entrance sign corner and then the community connection corner. And we're basically just brainstorming, just kind of ideas on the sign. And that needs to be visible from both sides of 61. What type of monument or some sort to go there, you know, rocks? There was a...
It's got lots of rocks.
Yeah. And there is a good movement to make sure that it's something that's going to look nice and be solid in 50 years. Like, that's going to just hold and really represent and welcome the area. No decisions were made on that, because we're still waiting on a lot of ideas on material selection, fit finish, and what type of budgets are going to be available. So that conversation will continue.
Exciting to have an engineer in that project.
Yeah.
We don't have to be engineers for that. We learned that as kids.
Right. I'm really good at throwing them in the water, too.
Making sync?
Yeah, exactly. Anything else? That's it? Great. Well, that's awesome. You guys are getting, jumping right in. That's great. Last Friday was Social Justice Day at the high school. I issued a proclamation for Social Justice Day for the high school for that. And that was, I also volunteered for the majority of the Social Justice Conference that was there. I interacted in an activity with middle schoolers and high schoolers. And I found it to be definitely prospective building for the kids. And the activity that we were doing was not one where, it was one where the kids had that, like, light bulb moment, and you could just see it in their face when they got it. And it was really, it was really cool. It was playing a card game with them. And they were, I think we broke the kids up on different tables, and we gave them instructions. And we didn't tell them that we gave them different instructions for different tables. And so they learned the rules on their table, and they started playing it, and playing it, and playing it, and getting pretty good at it. And then we told them they couldn't talk. And they played it a couple of times, not talking, so they understood how the game worked when you weren't talking, and they figured out different ways to communicate on their table. And then we started a tournament where the person who won one round moved to the next table, and moved to, and, you know, and then kept doing this. And, you know, like, the facial expressions on those kids' faces when they knew they couldn't talk to explain something, but they knew that they had, like, won according to the rules at their table, but not at the rules of the table that they were at, that, you know, and then they're just, you know, like... Like, there were so many different fantastic responses from those kids. And then when we debriefed them, you know, we were just like, "So what does that feel like?" And one of the kids raised their hand, and it was like, "It's like one of my teachers lets me eat in class, and the other one doesn't." You know what I mean? You know, they got it. They got the, they got the, like, the application of that to their own lives. And it was, it was really fun to see that. And I thought it was a really high-quality, really high-quality initiative that was, you know, started by the students, supported by the staff, and put out there. So I was really, thought it was really cool. Saturday night, then, so from 5:00 to 8:00 on Saturday night, I did an information gathering opportunity for people in the community to come to City Hall. I was here. I bought some pizzas. I rolled out the plan. I had it on the table. I had all the same information that MINDOT provided us, because it was all still sitting over there on the counter. And I had 25 people come by. And every single one of them came because they had questions. Everyone, every single one of them came because they were looking for information. And so basically, what I did for the three hours, I just started on one end, and I explained all the elements that are in the plan, all the way down to the other end. And when people came in, I welcomed them, told them to jump in, and then they followed through to the end. And then we started on the other end and kept going through. And there were business owners there, there were citizens, or community members, there were people from outside the city. There, I mean, it was a widespread of people that showed up. And I felt like it went really well. I think there were a lot of questions answered. They asked some really good questions as well. And I wrote down on the map, so we're going to have to, you know, we can bring those questions up as well. But a lot of them were questions about, you know, what's the frequency of wide loads going through the city? You know, what kind of trees are we going to be looking at? Here are some suggestions for tree types that would work really well in an urban setting. Those kinds of things. I mean, they were all really productive. So I feel really, really good about that meeting. I thought it went really well. We've also been working, I just ran into Shane Steele today, who's our Green Steps and Climate Action Plan Coordinator. And he has been working on consolidating all the information that we've been gathering for the Climate Action Plan. And he and I are going to sit down within the next week to just go over all that information and make sure that we're starting to build a comprehensive, a comprehensive plan around the information that we've gathered, identify some of the holes in the plan, and then, you know, just keep filling it out so it's at a point where we can present it, you know, or present the information that we've got thus far. So there's been a lot of work going on that on a bunch of different fronts. So that's part of the reason why it's taking a long time, because we have to pull all those little things together and make them kind of make sense in the same category.
Did you get anything, any kind of new conversations? Anything that hadn't been identified before that might have been raised by that group of people?
Which group? Oh, the people, the group at the meeting?
Yeah.
Nuanced versions of the same thing we've heard about. You know, concerns about wide loads, concerns about parking. You know, we probably should quantify the parking situation. One of the interesting things about it was that the First Avenue West intersection, which is the intersection at Buck's, you know, was a point of, a point of deep conversation on that. And there were a number of different ideas for how we can work on that to make it, to make it a successful intersection. And, you know, there had been a number of ideas thrown out about it, one of which, is it possible to make that a one-way? Is it possible to put two stop signs there so that, you know, so that when people stop right before Buck's entrance to his property, then there's a place to go to? Because otherwise, if we put the sign way back, then they'll stop there.
You stop before Buck's?
Exactly. Right? Right? Hmm. I know. I know. I'm right there, too. But one of the, one of the things about that plan, though, that people really appreciated was that it formalized that turn going onto First Avenue South?
First Street.
First Street South.
Not even south.
Which is this one right here.
It's actually First Street North, but we don't call it that.
Seems really confusing.
First north of Wisconsin.
Oh, interesting. Well, that's so confusing.
We just call it First Street, because we don't have a First Street South.
That's super confusing. Anyway, so First Street right here. People appreciated that that entry was formalized a little bit more, so that we don't have people coming out of Buck's and trying to go directly onto Highway 61 from there, so that there's less space in that area, so they'll be more motivated to go down and use the Broadway light to get up to Highway 61.
We can hope.
We can hope. And I was sure to qualify a lot of the things, a lot of the initiatives that we put into this plan to show that, you know, this is what we're intending to do. We're incentivizing certain behaviors over others. People are still going to trickle across the road. But you know what? If they can see that there's a bump out, if they can see that there's an accepted way to cross, we would like to think that more people would use that. And I think that we will see that that is going to be, that's going to be the reality of it. So that went, I thought that went really well. I'm glad that I did it. And, yeah, I encourage the community to continue to bring comments forward. I'm sure that we'll have people here at the next meeting for municipal consent as well. So then, the last three days, I spent down in St. Paul. Monday, I got up pretty early and went down there and met with a number of members of the Bonding Committee for the Senate and the Capital Investment Committee for the House, which are the same thing, basically. And, you know, talked about the boat launch project, and talked about some of the other stuff we're up to here in Grand Marais, and got some pretty positive, some pretty positive response to that. Some of the other people that came down as well were Karen Blackburn from Cook County Higher Education came down, Charles Skinner from Lutson Mountain came down and joined us as well, because they, the Chamber, the EDA, IRRB have all been working together on a vocational training program for Cook County in, to formalize the nursing program, so that we can not just offer CNAs and TMAs, but also LPNs. So there's a bridge course from CNA to LPN that they're getting set up up here, so that we can teach that through Lakespear College. But you need to have, I think it's a minimum of 13 to do the program. So we're asking for some funding to get that program off the ground, because we don't have 13. So we need to, we need to make sure that we can get that program going so that we can start that channel of going up. And the concept is that once you get LPNs, then you can start, when you get enough interest in that, you can offer that cohort for an RN program as well. So we can offer the whole spectrum of that. And that was extremely well received. The other concept is a partnership between all those other entities... The other, the other concept is a partnership between all those other entities, I said, and, and the school, ISD-166, because they're expanding their culinary arts department, or culinary arts facility up there as part of the referendum. And that will be used both for PSEO, culinary arts in the school, so they actually can work on their culinary arts certificate while they're still in high school. And also for a culinary arts program where, well, the PSEO will be part of this as well, but a college-level culinary arts program that can be done in correlation with the resorts so that they not only have a certificate that they're, that they're studying for, but they also have an internship in an executive, under an executive chef at a, at a respected resort kitchen. And they also will be provided lodging while they're working and going through the program. So I found out when I was down there that the Cordon Blue, which is a culinary school, closed in, in the Twin Cities, as well as the Dunwoody Institute stopped offering their culinary arts, and Brown has been struggling as well. And these are three of the five culinary arts programs in the state. Two of them are closed. One of them is struggling because the program is expensive and the starting wage for cooks is not incredibly high. So this program, with all these partnerships, looks to potentially get people through the culinary arts program with a certificate and job experience almost at free. And, and that, that to me just was like, dude, this is so cool. Like, this is gonna be great, because the, they're consistently, the, the resorts are consistently struggling to find qualified kitchen staff and/or training them up. And part of the reason that they're doing this incentive, and, and it was really well received, especially with some of the more conservative representatives and senators, because we're trying to solve this problem domestically, because of the uncertainty in the J-1 and the H2B visa programs. So, you know, there, there is a lot of initiatives that we brought forward that were really well received. Some, some of, some of the, of the representatives and senators had some concerns about where the money was coming from, 'cause we were asking it out of workforce development monies. And some people believed that that was an inappropriate use of that monies. But then we ran into, it's just the thing that's beautiful about being at the Capitol is that you can run into the people you need to run into. So like, I ran into Duane Hill, the MINDOT guy, like, twelve times, just like, hey, Duane, how you doing? Hey! We were going to the same meetings. It's like, he was right after us at a bunch of meetings, and it was really great. But we also ran into the Deed guys, like, all the folks from Deed that were the ones that make decisions on where this money goes to, and we ran it past them, and we said, so is this an appropriate use of this fund? And they looked at us and they said, no question. Absolutely. This is, this is an appropriate use of this fund. So then, when we were going to the, to the next senators and repu, representatives, when they asked us that question, we were like, well, funny you should ask. We just ran into them. So over the course of the two and a half days, I think we probably met with about eighteen different, different people in their offices, and it was, it was a pretty blistering pace to, to get all that stuff wrapped in. And it was also, it was Duluth days, Duluth and St. Louis County days, so there were, like, a whole bunch of our, of, of people that I recognized from Duluth and St. Louis County that were there as well. So, so we, we really hammered it in there, and I thought it was pretty well received. So we'll see what happens. A lot of uncertainty on the bonding bill this year, so nobody knows if there's going to be a bonding bill. They assume there is, but nobody's really quite certain how it's gonna look or how much it's gonna be for. So that was, that was that. It was really exciting. I'm glad. That's not my job. I would go nuts. But it's good to be home. You guys have anything?
Sure don't.
Any closing comments? Smarter Snyder Marks? I don't know you guys.
Good, good meeting.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Alright, we are adjourned.
Have a good evening, everybody.
Thanks, Chris.
You too. Forget he's over there.
Wait, who?